But we'll call the meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. We will start in our usual manner by prayer, pledge of allegiance, and roll call.
Power heads, please.
Gracious heavenly Father, we come to you today and just give you thanks for this community, for its citizens, and for all who work and live here. We ask you to watch over decision-making and just keep us working together to make this community a better place to live. We ask you to watch over our staff and this board and the citizens here and bless them each and every day. We ask you to watch over those who are hurting right now with loved ones that are in need and sickness and ask you to bless them and guide them. And the ones who have lost loved ones here recently, we ask you to be with them each and every day. Thank you for all that you do for us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
(Inaudible)
Baker.
Here.
Barth.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Ridgeway.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Basset is absent.
You have in your packet the October 7th regular council meeting minutes. Are there any additions or corrections?
I move to approve the minutes as written.
Second.
Roll call.
Ridgeway.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
You have the approved bills list in your packet. Are there any questions?
I have a couple of questions, Mayor. For compressor oil, that's air compressors ink, thirteen hundred thirty-five dollars. It's for in the blower building. That's those aerator pumps. Is that what those are?
I would have to find out for sure. I guess no, they're in with the blowers.
That's a lot of oil. Lot of good oil. Okay, and glider truck for fifteen-five.
That was in the budget from last year already. It's a new body for the 2000 dump.
The dump bed?
Yeah.
Wow, that's an expensive dump bed.
Lot cheaper than a new truck.
And Zirker Technologies, three thirty-one forty, police annual maintenance fee. Is that for those new radios that we can't use?
No.
Oh.
That is when I talked to the council, I don't know where it was, about the additional two-hundred-and-eighty dollars fee for the personnel use of Zirker. That's what that is, but it's fifty dollars more than what I was told. And so I got a check with Zirker to figure out why. But that's what the 911 director gave me, the price it would be. It was two-eighty, and he was figuring it. He figured it out because the price that he got was one lump sum for the county. He figured it out to be two-eighty for us.
Now, this is... So I know what you're talking about. Is this where they are allowing you to go down and use their stuff?
No.
Okay.
No, this is the Zirker is our database system for that the whole county uses. Us, the police department, and the sheriff's office. It's our report-writing system. When they went to Zirker...
And it works?
That does.
That part does, but radios don't.
They did make some changes in the radios. And they're... Right now, we're testing them, and they're working a little bit better than they were.
Wonderful.
So they had to adjust some frequencies, I guess, and they're trying different options, so.
That's great. They start trying. That's the only questions I had, Mayor. And if nobody has any others, pay the bills.
Are there any other questions? Ron, then. Yours was a motion to pay the bills.
Yes, on second.
We have a motion to pay the bills. Do I have a second?
I'll say.
Roll call, please.
Baker.
Yes.
Barth.
Upstain.
Jones.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Ridgeway.
Yes.
Okay. We're down there on the agenda under boards and commissions. The park board met on October sixteenth. The minutes are in the packet. Are there any questions? More comments?
Yeah, I got a question. Whose responsibility is it to clean concession stands since it's left in the mazin?
Well, I think they're referring to...
It's the... I've already commented. The board of the...
Got any questions?
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions? All righty. Are there any other boards and commissions that have anything to report?
That'd be me, cemetery, wouldn't it?
Yep.
Okay, we met on the night... Or the eleventh. And the meetings are now held at the township hall if anybody's interested and would like to go. We discussed and voted on the removal of the angel, and we all voted yes to have her removed. And we set aside some money in the budget for next year for repairing some of the broken monuments in the cemetery. And everything's going good.
Can I ask you a question?
And the next meeting is the tenth. It's January tenth at six.
When you discussed removing Gainesville a few different meetings ago, it was suggested that somebody contact the girl that created it and see if she wanted it or anything. Did somebody contact her? Did that happen? Did not happen?
And I'm not... Other than Zane, I'm not sure if anybody really knows where she is, who she is. Zane might. We didn't ask.
Well, Zane has spoken to me, and he wanted to know if there was any interest because the angel's going to be cut down because it is in ill health. If anybody wanted, was interested in having it and maintaining it and tried to just prevent it from rotting further, if possible, eventually, of course, it's going to rot from the inside out. I guess the inside's bad, too. But my feelings is that Zane's heart's really into this angel, and I don't think anybody would care for that angel better than Zane if no one else showed an interest and there was no... I mean, we don't want people fighting over the angel, but...
I just thought it would be nice to give the creator an option. You know, those artistic people, they're a little funny, too.
And really, this is a cemetery's decision, I guess, so... All right. Anything else, you?
No, that's it.
All right. Thank you. Next meeting, January tenth, six o'clock, township building, you said.
Right.
Council committee reports. I did not see any committee reports in the packet. So are there any committees that want to give a report? Have anything to report? Meetings, anything?
I know it's going to have a meeting.
And you know when?
Thursday.
Oh, no.
You said Cheryl won't be here.
Tomorrow.
Okay.
When?
Tomorrow five or four-thirty? Would that be good? Cheryl, you'll be here?
Tomorrow at four-thirty, Diane.
Okay. Somebody needs to make sure they put that on the calendar. All right. We will go on into the administrator's report. I don't see anything in writing in the packet, but...
Well, really, nothing passed long. We'll try to get out and start leaves probably this week, whether permitted. My only other thing was going to be to the personnel committee. I don't know if you got any meetings scheduled or whatever, but next one you schedule, let me know. Got some things run past me.
Need something right away, or?
Yeah, it's not super pressing, but...
Jones, Basset, and Ridgeway.
Okay.
Darn, I wanted that one.
Like four next June or something, maybe, but...
So you want it before the next meeting, or just?
Yeah, whenever you guys are going to... If you got something else to meet about...
We have a plan right now, so... I'll keep it in mind. And you want to be there, right?
Well, yeah. Just kind of... Let me know.
All right. Hand in his resignation.
Then we're not going to meet for three years.
Anything else, Kent? Anybody have any questions for Kent? All right. We'll go on to the solicitors' report.
First thing I have is ordinance 2019-14, a first reading by caption only, an ordinance to amend the annual appropriations ordinance. You need this done, Cheryl? And declaring an emergency.
This is just to go on for another year? Nothing else is changing? Is that true?
Chang, about the cable TV?
What? Fourteen, I thought, was the indigent person?
No, that's not on for tonight. That's resolution. This is ordinance fourteen.
Oh, it wasn't on. Got my stuff out over there.
You need this pass as an emergency?
Yeah, thank you.
I move... I move to suspend the rules.
I just got a question. Capital improvements, what is it? Was it just mentioned? Did I miss it?
Um, no, it's only in... It's not capital improvements, the fund. It's capital improvements in cable TV, Hicks TV.
That's where you're just talking. Okay. So that's their money being moved, so...
Yes.
That's good. Okay. Thanks.
Roll call.
Who's second?
I did.
Larry did.
Yeah. Baker.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Ridgeway.
Yes.
Second, third readings, ordinance 2019-14 by caption only, an ordinance to amend the annual appropriations ordinance and declare an emergency.
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Ridgeway.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
And the next thing I have is ordinance 2019-15, a first reading by caption only, an ordinance amending section 925.02 of the codified ordinances of the village of Hicksville, Ohio to revise water rates. And then ordinance 2019-16, a first reading by caption only, an ordinance amended chapter 951 of the codified ordinances of the village of Hicksville, Ohio regarding refuse collection. Those are just first readings. I put a bunch of materials on everybody's desk tonight, a solicitor's report, the main things. I'll just highlight. Attached to it is the drafts of the park contracts that I did based upon the meeting that we had a couple of meetings ago and follow-ups at our last meeting. There's also the sample language. The committee had asked me to revise the golf cart ordinance in order to address other under-speed vehicles, for lack of a better term. You'll see that's in there in about a year or so ago, the Ohio General Assembly passed something that didn't specifically regulate them, but put some general regulations in there in the condition that local municipalities wanted to permit them and regulate them. So I used the definitions exactly from that section. What it would do is anybody that's interested would have to get their inspection still at the police department, but they would have to meet one of the definitions of under-speed vehicle, utility vehicle, mini-truck is another term. I'm going to have to have somebody tell me or show me. Although the definition clearly says what it is, I don't think I've ever seen one. But in either event, I used them right out of the code to keep it consistent. We have to be, if we're going to choose to do it, at least as strict as the state is. We can be stricter with our regulations, but not less strict. So the issue that's going to come up, and I'll tell you right away, is under-speed vehicle obviously means a slower vehicle. Utility vehicle, for lack of a better term, would be like a gator that's got a bed on the back that's a utility. And some of those, like Rangers and stuff like that, have that. But like the Polaris Razors that are just like, you know, farmers use them to scout fields and they're out driving them sixty mile an hour out in the field or whatever, that would not fall under this policy because of the way the state has defined those things. So anybody that's interested in that would have to make sure that they meet the definition of one of the three areas. Golf cart would obviously be an under-speed vehicle, so anything in that category. Lawnmower would not be any of them. We've talked about that before. So look through it if anybody's got any questions or comments. My intention was to bring back, like, to put that into actually like an ordinance and bring it back for a first reading at the next meeting, but that's what the language will be like. I also put a penalty section into it, which we should have had in the golf cart ordinance. Quite frankly, it says if they don't comply with it, it's a minor misdemeanor, subject to a fine, and each day that they're not in compliance is another violation. So I don't anticipate that being a problem, hopefully, but at least there's some teeth to it in case we need it. The other question that I answered that I know Julie at the police department has brought up a number of times, and this is kind of spelled out in the revised code. It's not intended to permit out-of-state registered under-speed vehicles to be driven on the roadways in Ohio. So there is a line in there that basically says that out-of-state vehicles that meet the definition aren't permitted on the streets of Hicksville. So it would only be in-state vehicles. And they still have the requirements for the getting the registration and the plates and all the pieces of equipment that they have to have. That's all pretty much the same. We already had that spelled out in our golf cart ordinance. So that's the highlights on those things. If anybody else has got a question about any of those things. And then there... I don't know if they made their way to everybody's seat, but there were two resolutions that weren't necessary for tonight. I did one. Cheryl did one. Those will be on for the next meeting as well, if anybody has a question. One's on the indigent reimbursement of when we have to pay for indigent lawyers, we get reimbursed from the state through the state public defender's office. And every year, we got to pass an ordinance that'll allow them to do that. And the other one has to do with authorizing the mayor to sign the release involving the Haynes real estate transaction. The last thing, and I think Ron Jones is going to request it, because of the nature of the real estate transaction, I didn't put it in my report, but I think Ron's going to request a short executive session to discuss the pending real estate transaction regarding our wells, where our wells are going to be.
What about this one? Do you want to pass this tonight?
No, because I'm still waiting on his...
Okay.
He's got to come through his signed version, and his check's got to come through before she can sign it anyway, so...
Does the ordinance committee want to look at this? I know Eric's not here tonight, but does the ordinance committee want to go through this? One on the vehicles? Did it mention?
I can't...
The under-speed vehicles? I mean, do you want to review any of these?
Or anybody individually could comment some questions or whatever, and I think if everybody's got a copy of it, then we can...
You're going to bring it up the next meeting.
Yeah, I'm going to bring it in, and we can have as many readings as we need. I don't think that's all right.
I think that's all right.
Yeah, as long as we're not trying to pass anything tonight. We didn't have in our packet to read before we came.
No, no, no. That's not even in...
I'm saying...
That's not even in ordinance form. That's just like the language of what the law would be. I would have to put it, you know, with the caption and everything on the top. That's why I did it that way.
Do they still have to have a slow-moving vehicle?
Not on those vehicles. Once they're plated and registered. They can only go on roads that have a speed limit of thirty-five mile per hour or less. There's...
Plated, right there.
They're plated, they're registered, they're inspected at the police department. We probably will have to modify our inspection form, which I'll talk to Julie about. I know she already has one, just because, for instance, in the definition of under-speed vehicle through the state, I don't remember off the top of my head, but there is a weight limit. And so they'll have to verify... You don't have to weigh them, but they'll have to verify that, you know, the weight of their... unloaded weight of their vehicle is less than whatever it is. And so there'll need to be a spot on the form where we can do that. And then we'll still give them their certificate of that it's been inspected, and that's what they then take to get it registered, to get the plates and everything. They still got to have headlights, taillights, turn signals, horn, seatbelt, all of those stuff.
It'll be like something with a trailer. You'll have to take your trailer or vehicle to the...
Get it inspected, then they give you the...
Get it... Get a waistline...
Put it that way.
With it to the police station.
Yep.
Just real quick. I see a young man, he drives his tractor with a little utility trailer, but he does lawn care. I mean, he has to drive it.
Does he have a slow-moving vehicle sign on it?
No.
Because that probably would...
It's a lawnmower or the wagon. I just...
That would probably qualify if he had like the triangle on the back and he was driving it under the speed limit. That would not qualify to be registered and be an under-speed vehicle underneath any version of the ordinances.
A tractor is a tractor.
Tractor, that's right. And quite frankly, if you read the slow-moving-vehicle statutes, they're designed primarily to cover farm vehicles, implements, things of that nature. That's why you see the wagons. They all got the slow-moving, or should at least have the slow-moving vehicle. So that's more designed for those purposes than this. This is more, for lack of a better term, people using them as passenger vehicles, but they don't meet all the requirements until they've been inspected and go through it. So it's a way of regulating them. It's not a moneymaker for the village or anything like that. It's not like we're hammering people on fees or anything like that. It's a way to keep track of them and make sure anybody that's doing it has followed all the rules and regulations for safety purposes.
Anybody have any other questions for Troy? Okay. We'll go on to the police chief's report.
First order of business is I would like to... Everybody to meet Roston Becker. You want to stand?
Hello, Roston.
Hello.
He is our new hire to replace Tyler Meyer's position as a patrolman. So I would like to... He has filled out all of his paperwork and would like to have him sworn in this evening, if it's possible.
And you have everything you need? Physicals, background checks, everything? Anything else in your report?
One I'd like to... I've sent this info down to Troy to explore the option of our policy and procedure manuals for the police department. And it's called Lexipol.
Roston, you can sit down.
They write policy and procedures for police departments. I think they may do fire and EMS, I'm not sure. But I've done some research on this. We have... Oakwood Police Department has two sworn officers. They are going with Lexipol. Napoleon PD has fifteen sworn officers. McCollum PD has four. Archibald PD has eight. Village of Fayette has three. Pioneer has four. And what's not on here is the city of defiance. They are now with Lexipol. Basically, what they do is they write a policy manual that pertains to police, to state of Ohio and federal laws and regulations. They are in the process of actually writing, producing a small agency policy and procedure so we're not to the big scale for big city departments. There's more than 150 policies researched and written by a public safety attorney. All these people that write these policies are attorneys. They review these policies all the time. They stay up to date on any court cases, any Supreme Court cases, any court cases with the appeals court in the state of Ohio. It eliminates the time that I have to look at policy and procedure, write policy and procedure, review the policy and procedure with the officer itself. They have a... It generates a system that's able to keep track of when they are reviewing the policy. And if they've reviewed any new updated policy, the system keeps track of that and will be able to monitor that.
By they, you mean the officers?
Yes.
So like you got digital signatures of they've been shown this policy and aware of it in case something happened that wasn't against policy or whatever, say, well, we had it.
Right. It's pretty much, I think it's all online.
It is.
And then every day, there is a daily training bulletin that is issued every single day. So every time an officer starts a shift, he would be required to read, to go through this or do this training bulletin every day. That comes with it. Like I said, they... Lexipol's legal and content development teams continuous review state and federal laws and regulations, court decisions, evolving best practices. When needed, they create new and updated policies and provide them to your agency, making it simple and efficient. Keep your policy content update... Up to date. They're delivered through Lexipol's web-based content platform system. They... When they make the changes, it's presented side by side each other, basically, so they can see the difference, what they made from this policy to the new policy. Like I said, and like I said, it'll keep track of who's reviewing the policy, when they do it. So the cost of this for us is because we are with Ohio Plan. So for the first year, we get 50% off. And the total cost that she sent me was 5,300...
That's after 50% off?
No. No, it looks like the total cost per year is, right now, is 5,530 per year. So we get 50% off that first year if we go with it. All right. The second year, we get 30% off of that. The third year, we get... You renew it yearly, but you always get, because you're with Ohio Plan, you get 10% off every year, no matter what, as long as you're with Ohio Plan.
Is this the policy and stuff that Craig Docter's worked on for a couple of years?
No. This is something totally different. Now, we have... I've just submitted policies or procedures that we just finished up to Troy to review. This is... They write everything.
When you named off those communities and those number of people in each community, what did that mean? Why would you have more than one person? What are you saying?
That's the number of officers.
Yeah.
Showing the size of the police forces.
Size of the village.
That's the size of the...
Size of their police forces.
Yeah, and they're going with Lexipol because...
So some smaller, some the same size.
Yeah.
And then bigger. I'm sure all the big cities all are...
Yeah.
That or something similar.
But I think it's an option, or at least explore that option, to look into it.
I know Cheryl's somewhat familiar with it because when we were looking for a policy on, I think it had to do with police taking vehicles home from work. You got that, I think, from somebody at one of the clerks. I remember you sent me a form to look at or something, and it was a Lexipol policy on taking vehicles home. I'm obviously familiar with it from defiance because I actually have access to it through, so I can look at their policies, you know, like at any time and when they get updated or whatever. And it's one of those things like, it's kind of like insurance. You don't want to pay the money, don't want to pay the money, you don't need it until you need it. And if for some reason there was something, I'll say something drastic, officer-involved shooting, or police chase where there was an accident and, you know, some innocent bystander got killed unfortunately or something, that's the type of stuff that if those policies were followed and the people reviewed it and we had proof of it and all that stuff, that's the stuff that would make a difference in litigation on things like that. So it's one of those where you'd say, well, I hope we never need it, but if we do, it's a good thing to have, kind of like insurance. So...
Has the fire department ever looked into that, or?
I had looked at it before, but I've just been kind of dragging my feet on it because of the cost. I don't think ours is that much, but there still is a...
Discount? Police and fire discount if you're supposed to do it?
I'd have to ask her. I don't know how that works.
You remember who you're talking to?
I would think they're going to the police department to look it over. I mean, it would be something, this is completely new. I mean, we've never had, we've never had a chief before.
It's affordable in your budget.
Yeah.
I mean, so...
That's something you'd like to looking, putting into your budget for next year, I would assume.
Yeah, I mean, to me, I think just for the liability to the village and us, and they're writing policies specific to our needs. Like I said, they're coming out with a, she said, they are in the process of doing a smaller agency policy for people like us.
Have they been around for quite some time? I'm, like I said, they've been, have they?
Yeah. So I think in today's society with all the lawsuits that's filed against police and...
If, if we told you tomorrow that, yeah, that's a good thing to do it, but you say that they're doing this policy for smaller places now, how long would it be before you would have any, any concrete information to use with your people?
I would, we would go with whatever policy they got created now, no matter what.
And then if they develop this...
They develop it smaller, we can eventually...
Transition over to it.
Yeah, transition, you know. I know we are going, we are in the process right now with the police department, Defiance Police Department and the county sheriff's office, developing a county-wide pursuit policy. So we're all on the same page during pursuits and we all know that everybody's got the same policy to pursuits, and it's based off of Lexipol's pursuit policy that Defiance Police Department has.
So most, like you said, mostly the agencies are following this type of program and...
Yes, from what I've been told, yeah. That's why I gathered the information to see who had it in our area.
Sure, sure.
Because I got the idea when we were looking at this pursuit policy, Defiance Police Department went to it, and they just absolutely love it. And it just eliminates the headaches of their supervisors, the headaches of the chief writing these policies, because attorneys are writing these policies. And it's, and they're written to the state of Ohio, they're not based off, yeah, they take some Supreme Court cases and federal statutes and stuff like that and they use those, but it's written strictly to Ohio's laws. So like part of Ohio, to be, you know, was it Governor Kasich, I think, or Mike D. One developed a collaborative system that, you know, departments had to be in line with their policies on use of force, hiring several different other things. You don't have to belong to the collaborative program, but if your policies and procedures are not written to that form, then if you get into a lawsuit or something like that, you could be in some serious trouble.
Aren't we in the form of government that we have here, where we follow the Ohio revised code? Aren't we somewhat covered by state statutes and state rules now anyhow?
Well, these would be policies that you're, the way you're enforcing those state statutes.
Interpreting what the, how you apply the statutes and, you know, what you can do and what you can't do. And, I mean, it's not just pursuits and use of forces.
Right.
It's like I said, taking vehicles home for, you know...
But none of that stuff already exists?
No.
No?
We have our own policies.
We have our own policies, right. And the difference is, and some of those probably are perfectly fine and would be fine for the next 30 years based upon what they are, but some things change on a weekly, monthly, yearly basis, and that's the one advantage of this, is if there is a, I'll just make something up, a court of appeals decision out of Cleveland that interprets some area of liability exposure or whatever on excessive force or whatever, then they take that into consideration, they go back in and look at their policy and say, hey, do we need to tweak this a little bit so that even though we're not in the 8th district, which is Cleveland, other courts may interpret it this way, so we want to make sure we cover that so that we don't open ourselves up to the liability that they now say the, make somebody up, the Westlake Police Department has because of something they did and they were following their policy and now it's been interpreted differently.
Larry, would you take this to the police and fire committee and take it under consideration, please?
Yes.
Thank you. Anything else?
Yeah, I was supposed to bring up about the second new hire, because I talked to Larry this afternoon and this morning. I know I'd asked Troy about this when we did the advertising, because it was in so close proximity.
And it's the same exact classification?
Yes.
It's not the same position, obviously.
He felt we did not have to advertise that again, so there's some questions whether we do or we don't.
We'll take Troy's.
Yeah, I don't believe you do because it's the same. I mean, if it was like a patrolman one instead of a patrolman two, or a, you know, something that was a little different in variation, I mean, it's the same job classification, the same requirements, the same pay, the same, you know, I mean, it's all...
Because I've chosen my second hire, but I haven't talked to him about it yet, so...
Larry said he wasn't on the interview, so...
Yeah, Mike and I...
We talked, yeah, we talked about it at the interview, about if it's with the advertising and the position and everything, and told him to get with Troy, so it was done, so.
I think that's all I have, unless you guys have anything else.
Would you like to do the swearing-in now so you can get out of here?
There's a little one back there getting nasty.
Oh.
Steve, more tea.
I think they're being great.
Is that your second hire?
Yeah, yeah.
So I have to work there again, so again, because I miss school.
They had him.
Well, he could come right after school and work till then. I don't know when he'll get his homework done, but...
He's going to run against Ron for mayor, the little one. Big time. Left hand on the Bible.
I did that last time someone saw that picture in the newspaper and he said, yeah, there isn't that wrong. So left hand on the Bible, right hand in the air. I'll try to do these short phrases so I don't confuse you too much and tangle you. All right. I, Roston Becker...
I, Roston Becker.
Do hereby solemnly swear...
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America...
I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the state of Ohio...
The Constitution of the state of Ohio.
And the ordinances of the Village of Hicksville...
And the ordinances of the Village of Hicksville.
Defiance County, Ohio...
Defiance County, Ohio.
I will well and truly serve the Village of Hicksville...
I will well and truly serve the Village of Hicksville.
As a police officer...
As a police officer.
Without favor or affection...
Without favor or affection.
Malice or ill will...
Malice or ill will.
That I will see...
That I will see.
Or cause our community's peace...
That will cause our community's peace.
To be kept and preserved.
To be kept and preserved.
That I will prevent...
That I will prevent.
To the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability.
All offenses against that peace.
All offenses against that peace.
And that...
And that.
While I continue to be a police officer...
While I continue to be a police officer.
Discharge all duties thereof...
Discharge all duties thereof.
Faithfully...
Faithfully.
According to law...
According to law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right. Congratulations. We'll have you, we'll get this signed while you're...
Hey, you guys want some candy?
Yeah.
That's lesson number one, don't ever take candy. You can have candy.
Yeah. Want to take him a ride in your van, too, Larry?
Never take candy from a stranger.
Nobody's stranger than me.
Mmm, that's going to be good. I thought it was taffy, it's not taffy. Real hard rock candy, Jolly Rancher.
We will go on with the fire chief's report.
In your package should have been the EMS bylaws. If you have time to review them this time, I highlighted the correction.
Changes? I like that. Would you routinely have four personnel in the squad?
Not continually, no. That's just going to be the maximum that will be allowed. And it'd have to be an extreme situation for that.
Okay, that seems kind of crowded, I thought maybe that was...
Yeah, there's usually no more than three at the most of the driver.
Okay. Does anyone else have any other questions? Does someone want to move to approve them? If you...
I'm making motion to approve, it's written.
A second.
Roll call?
Yeah.
Baker?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Everly?
Yes.
I am working on the fire ones to update those and bring them more current. And to piggyback on what Martha did at Lexipol, I think it's something I was looking to do. I have looked at it, but the cost is, but it also is going to cover areas that for policies we may not even have yet, that may pop up. The only other thing I have is Carnival Saturday. Trick or treating is from 5:00 to 7:00. And the carnival is from 6:00 to 8:00.
And your breakfast was very good, the morning of the Oktoberfest.
Thank you to the supporters from the breakfast.
How many runners did you have?
I'm not sure.
I think I...
There was like 30. We did real good with that, too.
Great, well, thank you for partaking in that event. I know that Mark Young is already planning for next year.
Yep.
Yep. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
And the park director, do you have anything, Val?
I don't, I don't have any questions.
I don't have any questions? All right, we'll go on to the fiscal officers' report.
I only have two items, actually three. The fund status, if anyone has any questions about that. I do have this, it's from Granite, it's a telephone company like Frontier, that I'm not soliciting for new telephone service, they came to me, and this is their proposal. And I do have a copy of a bill from Smith Brown that we have an indigent burial that we need to pay for.
But it was over our amount that we have authorized, correct?
Right. But they were only asking for what is in our contract, and Troy's already looked at it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they're just asking for the amount we said we'd pay.
Oh, I thought it would, oh, okay.
I read that, right?
Okay, all right.
We don't have to pay more than what we said we would.
I've been wondering during the meeting whether to bring that up or not, so...
What was the amount? I can't remember.
$1,500.
$1,500. Is it legal to ask who?
Well, yeah, I mean, that's, what, what kind of stopped me is I know that it typically says in our agreement that it's pre-approved before the burial. In this case, the burial happened and then we got billed and wasn't notified of it and advanced like our agreement says, but you can answer their questions, all right?
Back in July, yeah.
You want to know who?
Yeah, is that legal? Can we ask?
It is, here somewhere.
I didn't know.
And this is our first one since we've had the grant, it's been about six years?
Yeah, Dale Sather, I think, that's how you say it.
So Cheryl, as she said, this bid for telephone service was unsolicited, but I have to tell you that I appreciate the fact that Larry made the comment that he thought our Frontier bill was entirely out of line. And he, I think, contacted SMTA to give us a quote to see, to compare the two, and in the meantime, this company contacted Cheryl and sent a quote, so we can already see that Larry was probably correct and was correct, is correct.
Tell that to my wife.
And so, you know, I'll be curious to see what SMTA comes back with. Did you follow up to see if...
Did you follow up, then?
And you? Yes, I did.
I'll have to check again. Okay, because I checked earlier before and I didn't see.
It's a lot of pages.
Thank you, Cheryl. He just needs to see your bill, that's all.
Is it the same as this?
She showed them all, all the bills.
It's a what?
The same as this, all the billing. Have they added any?
Huh? I don't know, they have some of the addresses that don't exist and things like that, so it's kind of scary, but the numbers are good.
Okay, we are going down to the mayor's report, and I do have not any idea, well, I mean, what it says there is a couple of people that would like to be considered for the park board in 2020. I'm not trying to fill slots that Ron could fill when he becomes mayor in January. That might be something that you would like to, if you want it taken care of in advance, we can all work through it.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, I mean, that's something I think...
Well, there's some seats that need to be appointed by the school and some that we pick, and so depending on what seats are being replaced, says who gets to, pardon me?
We already have one from the school.
For who?
That's already been there.
Right, okay, so you, you need two school representatives, one, and you've got one on this, from the school, which is Ryan Meiser?
Yes.
Okay, so all the rest of the park board seats don't have to be from the town?
Oh, from the town, right, from the town.
Okay, from the town, okay.
I would like to see anybody interested in the park board, though, to submit their names.
You have to read the ordinance before you do anything.
I'm not doing anything because this is not something I'm ready to take care of. Is someone going off, no one's going off immediately till the end of the year, right?
Right.
And I just want Ron Jones to have a chance to...
It's something that one needs to fill.
Take care of that if he wants to.
January 1st, you know, it's just, that'd be fine.
Okay, so then, what can...
I think council has approved and gets put on.
Oh, they do.
But the park board can't do it themselves, that's what I mean.
Yeah, I would read the ordinance and figure out who's, how many of each.
Okay. So the 2019 CIC investor reception is Wednesday, November 13th, at 5:30 in Defiance at the Second Story. All of you, you know, would be welcome to come to it, just let Cheryl know if you're going to, because we have to RSVP...
What time?
By November 1st. It's at 5:30 on Wednesday, November 13th, I'm sorry, November 13th, 5:30.
Are you paying for lodging, Cheryl?
No. So if you're interested in going to that CIC investor reception, you know, let her know. And then, last time at our meeting, we talked about, well, you pretty much made the decision that the corner lot at North Main, the Rain Guard Lot, I'll just call it, you don't want to spend any, you don't want any money spent on it that will require any...
Heavy maintenance.
Work or maintenance, so leave it alone. That's how I took it. So it was brought up to me that if we aren't going to use it, why don't we sell it and let someone build a house there and get some property tax revenue from it and utilities and stuff? So I've been calling around to Mommy Valley Planning, the county commissioners, the state, because it was originally given to us through that Main Street NST program, and it's in the warranty deed that we cannot sell it. But in talking to Liz at Mommy Valley Planning today, she said Troy can rewrite the warranty deed and get that part out, and we can sell it. So just...
Rewrite the warranty.
Because right now, yeah, he said remove the, remove the restriction that's on the deed.
Can you do that with a prison sentence?
Yeah. I'll have to look at it, I'll look at it.
That's what she said, just remove the part on the deed that says... That's what she said, just remove the part on the deed that says it's restricted, and, and bid it off, or we could put it in the land bank. Originally, when we had, talked about this a couple of weeks ago, I was wondering if maybe our way out would be to put it in the county land bank.
Right.
Well, they did, she did come around today and say, if you don't want to bother with public auction, then you can always put it in the land bank.
I'll have to look at that, because that's obviously not normal procedure, that they've already deeded it to us, and we've accepted the deed with the restriction.
Yes.
And then to undo the restriction, I think would take more than just having them do another deed. They don't own anything to give us another deed. Well, plus, I know back when all those came about, the Commissioners had gotten federal funds... Right. To tear down that house, and... They had to do something.
They called them, Liz says she called them, and there's no...
And the federal government doesn't care?
Oh, I'm just telling you what she said. So we'll have Troy call Liz tomorrow, and, and we'll have Cheryl put that on our next agenda, and we'll follow up on that and get an answer on it for sure, which I thought that was good news, if we can just go ahead and have someone build a house here or something. And then the next thing, as you know, our downtown CDBG grant that we started last spring, Kent got involved in by default, and there were, you know, we had our open meetings, our public meetings, and downtown business people came, and, and then they were asked to turn in applications to apply for being a part of it, and there were only three applications that actually, if I understood it correctly, met, that were filled, that were filled out, you know, and that was Collins and Guilford and the Bridal Village, and then the Haver Furniture Store, Old Haver Furniture Store that was recently purchased. Well, the owners of the Haver Furniture Store recently dropped out, and so they're trying to pick up Scott Peters, because Scott had applied, and, you know, he has, he, his application would be very good, you know, to get the upstairs windows replaced and some of that kind of work. Now, this, this is a new program, so it's, it's been difficult to go through all the hoops and stuff, because originally it said there's no matching funds. Well, as it turns out, each of them are matching something to just make their grant application look better, you know, because this is, this isn't just Hicksville, this is competing against each other or ourselves, this is us competing against other communities, so if our downtown businesses are willing to pitch in, you know, their own money toward the project that looks better. So anyway, so we're trying to get Scott Peters on board for our third property, which I think is great news, so...
Absolutely, absolutely.
So that's where we stand with that. So does anybody have any other business before we go into executive session?
I move we go into executive session to real estate matters.
Real estate transit.
Yeah.
Roll call? Baker?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Richway?
Yes.
Anything to follow?
I don't think so. I mean, I don't...
Ron never knows.
Oh, yeah, sure.
That's true.